Thank you. Do, are there any modifications to the agenda? We'll start with my report. As you know, we like to recognize partners in education and we have a special one tonight. But before we do that, I would like to just review our list of some other partners in education that are very important to the district. And I'll just read those for you. Bass Pro Shops Corporate, Big Rock Climbing Gym, Campbell United Methodist Church, Champion Athletes of the Ozarks, Chick-fil-A, City of Springfield Workforce Development, Green County Commission, ITT Technical, KSMU Radio, One Sole Purpose, Professional Answering Service, gosh, I hear from them too often, Rotary Metro Springfield, Smiley's Market, and the Waterford Retirement Community. Our special highlight tonight, firm of BKD, and I'll ask Lisa Langley to introduce John.
BKD has been an outstanding partner with the district for many years. And currently, they partner with both Weller and Boyd Elementary. BKD and their employees are always ready to step up to the plate and fill the needs of both those schools when asked. Mr. John Wadimaker, the managing partner of BKD's Springfield office, is here tonight to give us more details about their partnership. Thank you.
Well, good evening, everyone. I'm very pleased to be here. You know, BKD overall has just always been very excited to be a partner in education with the Springfield Public Schools. And as part of our organization, we just believe strongly in giving back to our communities of our time and of our money. And one of the things that we did a number of years ago was we set up our own foundation, the BKD Foundation. And what we decided at that time was that, okay, we want our people to be involved in the community, but we need to be able to support them financially as well. And so thus the genesis of the BKD Foundation. And as we go through each year, trying to figure out, well, what is the best use? Because there are so many great organizations in our community that need support. One of the things that stood clear to us was the fact that there are some very needy schools within our public school system, and we can't be all things to all people. And so we decided a number of years ago that maybe the best course of action was actually to adopt a school or two, as it turns out. And let me explain that a little bit. As Lisa had said, we actually have adopted two schools between Boyd Elementary and Weller. And the reason for that is, we actually have two offices in Springfield. Many people don't realize that, but my role as the managing partner over the practice office of BKD, we've got the building across from the Hammond's Tower, and two floors are dedicated to the practice office, have about 200 people in it. But the corporate headquarters for BKD is here in Springfield, and they're up on the fourth floor. Well, the national office decided that they also wanted to adopt a school, and so they adopted Weller, and our practice office adopted Boyd. And over the years, we've done a number of different things that I thought I'd just share with you. At Weller, a unique thing that was done was the establishment of what is called the Pride Store. Pride is our values: passion, respect, integrity, discipline, and excellence. And we thought that dovetailed very well into the elementary school itself. But what we wanted to do is establish a way of helping those underprivileged kids with things that they need. Employees from our national office will donate shoes, supplies, whatever is needed by the kids that is determined by the principal and teachers. And it goes into the store, and our people actually volunteer their time to make sure that the store is neat and orderly. The teachers themselves will actually provide pride dollars as a reward for attendance and for, you know, getting schoolwork done and different things of that nature. And it's pretty much up to the teachers to decide what criteria. The dollars that the kids earn can then go to the store and get the things that they need. So that's kind of a big deal that we're really proud of establishing. In addition, every July, August, our national office does a school supply drive. We get an understanding of what the needs are, and we bring that all together and then deliver them in August before the school starts to try to help the kids with what they may need. And then lastly, we've been participating in the Lunch Buddy Program, and we have about 20 folks from our national office that do participate in that as well. On the Boyd side of things, actually, I'll be honest with you, I just found out about what was done there with the Pride Store. We may be doing something similar with Boyd as well, but up until now, we have not done that. Instead, we've spent probably a little bit more money in terms of financial support. Over the years, going back to 2007, we did a $12,500 donation that was to help ensure the continuance of the existing attendance program, but primarily more so was to actually help buy musical instruments for the students there. In 2009, we did a gift of $1,400 to the Underprivileged School Fund, Children's Fund. In 2010, we did a $1,000 gold sponsorship for the Support Springfield Public Schools Run and Community Fair. And then, over the years, we've done various other grants. And what we've done is, we've contacted the principal and asked, what do your teachers need this year? And in fact, we have a call in to Mr. Grant this year to find that very thing out, so that we can try to help, you know, with those kinds of needs. But over the years, there's been another $4,500 that's been given to the teachers to help them with that. Like Weller, we do a school supply drive each year, and just completed that. In fact, I think late last week, those supplies were dropped off to help the students as they get ready. And then one year, we actually donated money to help purchase new shoes for kids that were in real need. And then also, like Weller, we do participate in a Lunch Buddy Program to try to get the kids hooked up with professionals that maybe can be good role models for them. So, you know, overall, it's been a great relationship. You know, our people really enjoy the fact that, you know, in some small way, we're making a difference to the kids in our school system. So, thank you very much for allowing us to participate in that passion.
Any questions for John?
I just want to know who gives more, the national or the local?
You know, I haven't tallied it up, but I think it's all pretty good.
That was a good response.
You know, John, you and your employees and your partners are, you know, obviously, we appreciate what you do for these kids in the district. But you guys are, your presence has seen all over town in different charity functions and different boards, and I think your group is to be commended. There aren't, there are a lot of businesses in town who don't do this sort of thing. And you all have kind of set the bar high because you're one of the leaders in this, and it's noticed.
Well, thank you so much. I appreciate that. But I guess I'll turn right back to you. I appreciate all that you guys do to ensure that our kids are getting the educations that they need, and that's extraordinarily important to our community as well. So, thank you all.
You're going to be hiring them, so.
Exactly right.
Thanks, John.
All right. Thank you.
The other introduction I want to make is one that's also near and dear to my heart as I spent six years on the board of the Foundation for the Springfield Public Schools. And the now current president of the board is Tracy Barnas.
Thank you so much for bringing him to the board. I am Tracy Barnas. My day job is at UMB Bank. And I likewise have been very fortunate to have spent the last four years of my philanthropic and volunteer time as part of the Board of Directors for the Foundation. We experienced our fiscal year changeover last Thursday, and Joseph Reed very willingly handed the gavel over to me. And so we're anxious to be here. We met with Dr. Ritter, I believe, on Friday, Wednesday or Friday, either right before or right after that meeting, and had a great deal of discussion. His insight and his leadership to the district and to the schools is paramount. And we really appreciate his support, the support of the school board, and what all of us do to aid and to help the kids in our Springfield Public Schools. My husband and I are the parents of an 18-year-old student to be a senior at Central High School, and a son who will be a sophomore at Kickapoo. So we've got him on both sides of the city and are also products of the Springfield Public School system. So, as it relates to the Foundation, I'm very privileged to serve as the incoming president for the Foundation for Springfield Public Schools. As most of you know, the Foundation was founded in 1990. We're celebrating our 20-year anniversary. It has served over the last 20 years to meet the needs of students in the Springfield Public Schools. As many of you know as well, our mission is to raise, manage, and distribute monies that go directly back to the benefit of the schools. We have literally raised millions of dollars in the past two decades that have supported classroom needs, school initiatives, technology, and awarded scholarships to students and graduating seniors. During our meeting with Dr. Ritter last week, he was very candid and direct, as he always is, about the future of the Foundation, and the future of our district, and the future for our kids. We took those words of advice and that charge from him very seriously, and will continue to do that during the future of the Foundation. Those charges were to continue what we've done, to aid and to provide money that goes back directly to our schoolchildren, but with maybe a more direct charge around the 21st century. And that those needs have transitioned from 20 years ago to being smart boards and pencils and paper and supplies, to being more innovative, more art, and just more innovative in nature. And we, as a Foundation, if we want to continue with our mission and achieve that, we've got to stay with those times. And so, thank you very much for your time, for your input to the district and to the Board of Education. We couldn't do what we do without the partnership, the unique partnership that we share with you. So thank you all for your leadership. We really look forward to working with the Springfield Public School staff and identifying funding needs and developing ways to meet the needs of the students in the district. The Foundation plays a unique role in our community, and we'll strive to work very closely with you all and with other leaders in the community to better the lives of students. An introduction that I'd like to make as part of our changing of the guard, Nancy Vazino, who had served as the executive director for the Foundation for four years, has retired. Much deserved retirement. And along with a committee of nine others, we hired a new executive director, and I'm very excited to introduce her this evening. Janice Backus has joined us effective, I think Dr. Prater and I were talking, it's maybe a week and a half on the job so far. But Janice is no stranger to the Springfield Public Schools or to this community. She has served three years on our board and has chaired some of the most important committees that we take care of, one of which being Back to School with the Foundation. And then most recently, the book, the 20-year anniversary book of What I've Learned So Far, which is a compilation, I'll let Janice tell you a little bit more about it, but a compilation of student and teacher entries. And if you haven't had the opportunity to purchase one, or to make sure that all of your neighbors and all of your teachers and everyone that you know has had the opportunity to read the book and purchase one, all of the benefits or all of the proceeds from the sale of those books will go to benefit Back to School with the Foundation and that grant program. So, Janice has a very diverse background, not just in the community, but from a managerial perspective and in teaching. So her passion around education is very diverse. She and her husband Rich also have three children, all of which will be or are the products of Springfield Public Schools, Trevor, Janelle, and Rachel. So at this time, it is my pleasure to introduce Janice Backus, the president, or the executive director of the Foundation for Springfield Public Schools.
Thank you for having us both here tonight. I really look forward to working closely with the Springfield Public School staff, administration, and board, and working on ways that we can make a bigger impact in the students' lives that go to Springfield Public Schools. Last year, the Foundation managed and gave out over $213,000 in scholarships. That's about 150 different funds that are managed through the Foundation, and then over $155,000 in the Back to School grant monies. So we're currently in our Back to School Grant campaign. All of those funds will go to help classrooms provide funding for curriculum and technology and school improvement funds that are needed. And we just look forward to working with you. And if you ever need anything from the Foundation as far as funding needs, I would encourage you to call or email, and we'll try to work together to meet those needs. So, short and sweet.
Any questions for Janice? Any comments? Yes, Chris, Ms. Callan.
Well, when we came into the community 20 years ago, I had two very young children. And really, my first exposure to Springfield Public Schools came through my exposure to the Foundation, and it was the telethon for technology. And I think, I remember going out to Hillcrest for those first few telethons, and the excitement that I felt even as a resident of the community, but not as a parent of children in the system. So I think your focus to possibly switch back to, you know, a more of a technology focus or support for specific needs will not only serve our children well, but will help the community understand the vast responsibility that we have, even when you don't have children in the schools. So I think it was a nice introduction for me to get into the community and the educational community.
Well, and I definitely think supporting the public schools benefits all citizens, whether you have children in the district or not. It just benefits everyone. And what is it you said at our breakfast meeting, Dr. Ritter, something about we need to move from pencils to iPads? Yeah.
This will be in the history for years.
So, thank you, and we'll definitely work together.
It was nice for you to ask us for input, but you failed to remind us that we have a duty to you and that we occasionally need to write a check to you, too, so.
And I did bring brochures.
Thank you.
That have pledge cards and clothes.
Leave those with Ms. Luton, and she'll pass them out to us. Thank you very much. That's all I have. Dr. Ritter, your report.
Just a couple of things. First of all, this is always an exciting part of a time of year for us, and especially for parents with their kids leaving the home to go back to school. I mean, that's very exciting for them. And then also, the other thing is, is that we are in the middle of, with four of the sites, putting air conditioning in and last-minute cleanup that's occurring, and I think we're going to be ready as far as tomorrow is concerned, because I know Rod and your team have everybody working those sites. I know that, and you're doing a good job with that. So hopefully, that'll be all ready to go, and we'll be ready to kick off school on Thursday. Hope it rains tomorrow so it's nice and cool on Thursday. We'll see what happens. The other thing I want to mention is that we have a lot to celebrate as far as our results with the AYP. You know, the, no child left behind, being as punitive as it is, you can have outstanding results, but still look like you're doing terrible. And so, but either way, we had great results there when we compare ourselves to other districts across the country. And then also, our APR, 14 out of 14, is just a phenomenal response. In fact, I was with a number of my peers this morning from surrounding districts in southwest Missouri, and they were all just very impressed because we have to deal with more subgroups than anybody else does. And they were just blown away that we did as well as we did. And then also, the other thing is, the ACT results are very good. And I think the overall, our high schools, and really, I think the P2G efforts has been really very, very good as far as that is concerned. The final thing, which is the most exciting thing, I think, is our dropout rate has really dropped, really dropped. And I think that's a tribute to not just our high schools, not just to our middle schools, but really our whole system and really what they're doing and focusing on that. And so I think overall, we've had great results and something to be very excited and proud about. So we, it is some pretty high benchmarks that we need to step up to going into this new year. And really, a strong theme that I think really we need to focus on this year is to really continue to look through the eyes of the child. We've got to continue to do that. And I really feel that the most outstanding thing that we have going for us is that this community loves its kids. And no matter who or what they, what they're focused on, they realize that the greatest resource we have in this community are their kids. And so I really feel that Springfield has stepped to the plate, are taking care of kids as far as their basic needs are concerned, so that they can do well in school. So overall, we're ready to go, and Thursday's going to be kickoff, and I think everything's going to be going really smooth, hopefully. Yep, thank you.
I don't believe we have any comments from the public.
I'm sorry, I do have one other thing.
Okay, go ahead. You can do our public.
Why don't we do this? We're going to, we're going to share with you something that, you know, we always talk about the schools. You've got to see this. This is unbelievable, and really, it's a thing of the future. And so anyway, everybody, glue your eyes on the screen, and Scott Wentz is going to share something with you that, yeah, I thought this would happen, but not this fast. Go ahead.
Intelabot has the first and only completely automated floor care system on the market today. Our three robots can meet any floor care need. Hydrobot is a superior disc scrubber, ideal for the high cleaning standards in hospitals, schools, retail, and clean manufacturing facilities. The DuoBot sweeps and scrubs in a single pass, making it an efficient solution for warehouses, airports, and malls. The AeroBot is one of the only true vacuums on the market, perfect for prolonging carpet life in hotels, event centers, and offices. Cleaning with Intelabot takes just a few simple steps. Select your pre-programmed floor map, then just press, point, and go. Our machines are run by a simple touchscreen operation app. The icons prompt your staff through all the robot's functions, regardless of language or skill level. The help screens are available in multiple languages, and Intelabots also feature onboard support videos. Using our G10 technology, our robots can navigate virtually any environment. A combination of sonar and infrared sensors give our robots a 360-degree view of their surroundings, and will alert any robots, any obstacles, either stationary or in motion. All Intelabots are wirelessly enabled. The robots will alert you if they've encountered something that requires attention during a shift. And by most cleaning is needed, the robot will automatically send a report immediately in the shift, avoiding any guesswork. Intelabot systems are designed to be simple to operate and easy to maintain. The front cover swings open, providing full access to pads, brushes, and components. All brushes and pads are industry standard and readily available. A gel cell battery will power the Intelabot for up to four hours of cleaning. If needed, it can be replaced with the optional battery exchange kit in just minutes. The Hydrobot and DuoBot are the greenest surface scrubbers on the market. Intelabot features an advanced, exclusive, four-stage filtration and recycling system. It filters water to as low as one micron. Our filter systems use up to 85% less water and clean solutions, saving money and making Intelabot the most eco-friendly scrubbers in the industry. An optional UV light treatment can be added to our robots, improving sanitation.
Good evening. We just wanted to take the opportunity to share some of the new technologies that is actually coming to the school district through our partnership with Airmark. The DuoBot, which is the automatic floor scrubbing machine, is actually currently at Parkview, and the floor plans are being programmed into the machine. It's really impressive to see the logic or program that's in these pieces of equipment and what it's able to do. And there's one other area of technology that is coming to the district as well, and I've asked Mr. Owen if he would share that with you tonight as well.
Thank you, Scott.
Members of the board, Dr. Ritter. We've partnered with the tenant company, Airmark has, in design development of, obviously, trying to green up our systems. Custodial is a dirty business. So by doing that, the more we can do with green, the more we can do with less chemicals, the better. And there's actually states passing legislation about green buildings, green cleaning. So to stay ahead of that technology for about three years, Airmark's been working on this technology. And this is kind of the result where it's morphed into, and we'll go into a little bit more detail, some of the predecessors to this. This is called the Orbeo 5000C. We are one of six school districts in the country that have this right now. And we're doing the testing, we're doing benchmarking, we're doing measures and all that kind of stuff. This particular unit is the Grandaddy. It does a dual stream, and I'll explain that a little bit later. This currently is Weaver Elementary, but because of its size and capacity, it's going to be more effective at a high school, just for the return on the investment. There's the three technologies that we've been involved with. The first one, it kind of goes from the right, then to the left, then back. But the first auto scrubber we received is currently at Harrison Elementary, is a T3 auto scrubber with ECHO technology. It's the electrically activated water. I think you've seen those in my board reports for a couple of years now that we've been working with that technology. Then it went into the handheld unit that we're currently using, Hickory Hills Weaver. It's a disinfectant using electrified water. It's still dual stream. It's a neutral pH. It's actually drinkable, and there's a great educational video I'm going to be sharing with the principals from Bill Nye the Science Guy. So it's hilarious. So we've shown it to all the head custodians, and they're all wanting this technology because it does away with the sanitizing part of the disinfectant, which is typically your most dangerous chemicals that we use. And then it goes into the Grandaddy, which is called the Orbeo 5000. It's a split stream. It's a high pH, low pH system. The high pH side of it is the all-purpose cleaner, so it takes care of organics, breaks them down. The low pH side is the disinfectant. And it's currently in EPA's hands, getting certified as a disinfectant. Once that happens, it'll remove all chemicals usage in the school, so we can even strip finish with this unit. So it's pretty versatile. This is just some ideas of, actually, the handheld units, very effective, a little bit expensive. Health services actually have got on board with those, using them for training for lower-income families and teaching hygiene and all that, so using those for giveaways. So we've kind of partnered that way to see how that'll all work out for us. And then I was questioned when I turned in one of my divisional activities reports because I, Donna called me because I misspelled blue. But I guess that's going to be somebody's trademark, and it is what it is, and I just followed the interaction. Any questions for me?
Any comment?
This is very exciting. You know, you read about this and the fact that it's basically oil and salt, right? Or?
Salt and water.
Salt and water. And it's amazing how much, how well it cleans and disinfects and does all this, and has absolutely no harm to anybody using it, or the vapors, and just, it really is pretty incredible. And I know Japan uses it pretty frequently in a lot of industry there, and the cost, I think, is one of the things that keeps it from being in a lot of businesses and homes. But it really is pretty incredible, and so I applaud your use of this and the development of it. Thank you.
How many sick days do these machines get a year?
Do they get?
Yeah.
I would like to comment, several people have asked if we're going to start doing away with custodians and bringing robots in. But basically, what I've explained is, as we continue to add square footage, we haven't added custodians. And this allows us to clean greater areas of square footage and maintain our current staffing levels.
Thanks, Scott.
That's all I have.
Great. I think we have no informational items tonight, and you can see the two actions that we took at the study session last time. We have a couple of action items for separate consideration. 8.01 is the property tax rate.
No robots here.
Robot CFO?
State statute requires an annual estimate of the amount of money to be raised by taxation to be prepared and filed with the county clerk by September 1st. Also, we are required to hold a public hearing, which we did prior to this meeting. The 2011 calculated levy reflects, as always, the requirements of the Hancock Amendment, which limits growth in the total revenue permitted to the lesser of the CPI increase in adjusted assessed values or 5%, whichever is lower. For the 2011 calculation, the increase in CPI was 1.5%, and the increase in adjusted assessed values was 0%. And that's after new construction is backed out at, per the calculation. Through the logic and machinations of the levy calculation, our levy will be increasing from 3.1121 to 3.1269. That's the operating portion of the tax levy. The debt service levy will remain at 51 cents. And that was approved by a vote of the public in April of 2006 bond election. The impact of the increase in the operating tax levy will be an increase of $4.93 on a home with a value of $100,000. The 2011-12 operating budget for current taxes is $98,400,000. While this levy, as calculated, would produce over $100 million in revenue at a 100% collection rate, the actual revenue received will be reduced by uncollectibles, delinquencies, and county taxes. And at this time, it's our recommendation that the board approve the estimated ad valorem property tax rate for 2011 of 3.1269 per $100 of assessed value. And distribution of the levy with $1.7823, or $1.78.23 going into the general fund and $1.3446 into the teachers' fund. Any questions? teachers' fund. Any questions?
Questions for Mr. Chodas. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Twitty?
Second.
By Mr. Lee, that the board approve the estimated ad valorem property tax levy for 2011 at 3.1269 per $100 assessed valuation. You may vote. If you go ahead, Mr. Chodas, with the treasurer's report, I'm sure it will be.
Yeah, wants me to vote again, too.
I vote early and often.
You vote early and often on this.
Okay.
This Florida, isn't it? Chicago.
All right. Go ahead with the treasurer's.
No one said no, right?
No, no one said no.
Okay. All right. Before you is the treasurer's report. If you'll turn to page two, that is our financial statement for July. It's the first month of the year. As you can see, we've collected about 3.4% of the total budgeted revenue, and we've spent about 2.3% of the total budgeted expenditures. Property taxes are up slightly over July of last year. Sales tax is down about $160,000 over July of last year. However, we receive, have received the August information regarding the sales tax, and it is up $354,000. So very nice increase. So year-to-date through August, we're actually up almost $200,000 on sales tax. At this time, I'll answer any questions the board might have regarding the treasurer's report.
Take a motion to approve the treasurer's report. Mr. Ritter and Mrs. Callen. There it goes. Okay. Good. Thank you, Mr. Chodas. We have some routine action items. If there are no changes to those, we can approve each of the routine action items as submitted. Mrs. Callen?
Second.
Mr. Lee?
Hey, tell us we voted. Did yours tell you?
Mr. Lee, uh-huh. There it goes. Thank you. I think everybody voted. We also have some general consent items. Yeah, perfect. Thank you. General consent items that we can approve by, by, be listening for a motion. Mrs. Callen?
Second.
Mrs. Twitty? That the board approve the recommendations submitted by administration and general consent items. Good. And I think we have no other non-agenda public comments to hear tonight. This is in city council, fortunately. Dr. Ritter, you have a legislative report. Do we have a legislative report? They're back in special se-
I think they're bringing them back in special session. And I don't think education's part of that agenda, but, yeah, at least we don't think so. Yeah, we don't think so. But I know they're coming back for special session. And then, other than that, I know the, I think we talked about this last time, but the federal Department of Education is backing off and allowing state waivers and district waivers. And so we think that's a, that's an exciting thing for the state of Missouri, because I know they're going, the state is going to apply for that. And we are also going to be looking into that, depending on what the state is going to look like. So anyway, those are the things we're looking at right now.
And are we, are we waiting on our application for a MAP waiver, depending on the state's action?
Yeah, we're, yes, part of that, yes.
Any future issues?
The only thing I would say there is that we did have new teacher orientation. And what did we have? About 100 and-
120.
120 new teachers on Monday and Tuesday of last week. Very, very, very good sessions. I thought Kathy Gross did a very good job. And so I think, I think we're ready to go with them. And had a chance to come to their classrooms. A couple of their, their classrooms are very nervous, but I think they're going to be okay. I think they needed those, that time in the classroom to be able to get ready. So, other than that, that's all I have for future issues.
On other issues, Mr. Lee, you want to update us a little bit on the ad hoc committee meeting?
All right, we'll do that. We had our first meeting last night of the ad hoc committee, primarily focused on three issues that we'll be looking at. And that deals with board governance and how we're, how we govern and looking at our roles. The second one was identifying our strategic plan, or reviewing our strategic plan as a board, our board's strategic plan, which has been, gets almost six years old at this point. And then out of that, if any change in board structure from the standpoint of committees or anything like that, that, that might fall out from a strategy standpoint. Certainly didn't resolve anything last night, but we had a great discussion and got a lot of stuff out on the table. And hopefully, we'll have something if anything changes, certainly with an update on strategic plan or whatever by December. At least that's a kind of the timeline I'd like to do. I certainly want to thank Mr. Ritter and Ms. Twitty, and as being part of the committee, along with Jerry Harmison and Debbie Tolliver, two past presidents of the board. And so it's a great group. And, and we got a lot of stuff on the table last night. And, and I think the timing is going to be good with this because of the, a lot of the things that are going on in the education this fall with MSIT 5 coming out, the, the Public Education Vision Project, which will be done in September, and that'll be rolled out, which will be the, just a great document based on what I've seen so far of setting a vision for public education in the state of Missouri that MSBA and Mass are putting together. And then the whole top 10 by 20 that Desi's proposing. So I, I think all that's going to kind of play into this as we move forward. And, you know, honestly, I don't know of any wholesale changes. I think when you're a high-performing board the way we are now, you know, you really got to get creative and innovative to, if, if you're going to be greater than you are now. So, I mean, that's kind of the goal that we're looking for. So we'll meet in a month and move forward.
Great. Well, thank all three of you for doing this. Greatly appreciate it. I don't think there are any other issues.
Just, just one, if I may, an update on the process performance management presentation we had at, at the work study. We did have a teleconference with Carolyn, what's her last name?
Kelsey.
Kelsey. Anyway, and we did zero in on the top five or six initiatives that we're going to target. And we'll come back to the board in the very near future to kind of share what those are, and then strategy around what that's going to look like those, on those four days, and how that's all going to roll out and deploy. So we feel we need to keep you updated. And so we'll do that here in the very near future.
Great. Thank you.
I, I just might remind the board that next week, St. Louis, Kansas City, and Springfield, the large districts will be getting together, kind of start the process this fall of meeting and at least talking about different issues like we have in the past. So our first meeting's next Wednesday. And hopefully, Dr. Prater will be there, and I'll be there, and Dr. Ritter with, with their board president and superintendent. So where it goes, who knows? But as we start all those other things that are going on in the, in the state, I'm sure there'll be several discussion items and maybe some action items come out of that. So.
Well, thanks, thanks to you all for starting that last year. Financial operations reports attached, do your plus deltas. We do need to have executive session tonight to discuss legal real estate and personnel matters. That's provided in section 610-21, 1234, and 13 RSMO. If I had a motion.
Second.
Mrs. Twitty and Mrs. Callen. We don't have to vote on that, do we? I guess we do.
Yes, you do.
We'll vote here this way.
Oh, no.
Jean shit down.
I already won't doubt.
We'll start with Mr., we'll start with Mr. Lee.
Aye.
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 And Mr. Hosmer had to leave early, so he was not present for that vote. Very efficient and effective. Thank you all very much, and thank you all for being here.